Good evening, it's six o'clock in the council chamber, special council meeting for the first release of the budget. And it is 6:00 PM, roll call, call to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any citizen comments this evening? Any citizen comments? Senior citizen comments, woman, I am D, review, consider recommending 2026 budget, Rebecca Spears, chairperson of the Finance Budget Personnel Committee, presiding.
All right, we are going to start with a general presentation of the recommended 2026 budget. Steve's going to be doing that, so Steve, go ahead and take over.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I appreciate this opportunity every year to just take a moment and thank our staff for all the great work that they do. First of all, I want to mention the work that's been done on this budget. I want to thank Jennifer and Jordan in finance for their outstanding effort in helping to pull this together. I want to thank the department heads for their willingness to meet with us and to go through some of the issues and allow some changes to be made as necessary in order for it to work. I want to thank the support staff in finance who put the document together along with Jennifer and Jordan, and all the people who work for the city. I know I say this every year, those of you who've been on council for a few years have heard this before, but I feel so blessed and so privileged to work with the people in this city, the people who work in this building, the people who work at all the remote locations. I've been in city government for a long time, and I just feel like the group that we've had in these recent years is just first rate, and it's a blessing to show up and spend time with them here every day. So thank you very much for all that you do, you're very much valued. So, budget presentation, as I often do, just start out with kind of a dashboard, kind of a snapshot of where we're at, so that'll be the first thing, followed by some highlights of the recommended 2026 budget. Then a look again, like we always do, at future challenges and opportunities, what are the next steps after tonight, and then obviously questions that the council might have and requests for more information. Boom, wrong button. Are you controlling it? Or mine? There we go, thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, so these are the things we typically look at, these are kind of the criteria that we kind of evaluate where we're at as a starting point. We look at debt management, where are we at in debt? What's the status of our general fund, our reserve balance? We sometimes call it our savings account, but it's a critical value looked at by people looking at our financial status. How's the city credit rating doing? What's the status of our TIF districts, of which we have many now, quite a few active ones? What do our property values look like? How are they doing as far as increasing or decreasing? And then what's our property tax rate in comparison with neighboring communities? First of all, debt management, our proposed new general obligation debt for this coming year is nine million, six hundred and sixty thousand. If you've been with us for a while, you're thinking that's pretty high, typically running at four and a half to five million dollar range. You can probably guess what the difference is, is that on the police station renovation of the Wildwood Plaza building, that's roughly half of that money, five million dollars. Waste water revenue bonds, about 5.7 million. For the year, we'll pay back about 3.7 million in principal on our current debt. The levy for new debt will be 4.9 million, that's a levy portion that we're going to be including in the levy. Our statute here is debt limit, for those who aren't familiar with this, that's 5% of our equalized value, set by the state of Wisconsin, they don't want cities and villages to go in over their heads, so they say you can borrow up to 5% of your overall total equalized value, which for us is 114 million dollars. Our existing general obligation debt that we expect as a 1126 will be 53 million, 178, 609, so comes to about 46.5% of what we're allowed by state law. You know, nobody's excited about debt, but we all have mortgages and those kinds of things at home, and being in the 40s is considered to be generally a decent place for most communities to rest. Council's adopted a policy, maybe we've talked about it before, again, if you've been around for a while, you've heard this, we want to go deeper and harder than the state. The state says you can only borrow up to 5% of your equalized value, we say, wait a minute, take that amount and take 65% of it, and that's what we want to limit you to. But as I showed you earlier, we're at 46.5, so we're well within the 65% self-imposed maximum that we are allowed. And then finally, about a quarter of our general obligation debt is payable by TIF districts, why is that significant? Because we get a return on investment. Ideally, we end up getting payback, and not only do we get the money returning in tax increment, but we also get the benefit of why we created the districts to begin with, which are economic development and community development type projects. General fund status, rating agencies use this, we meet with Moody's all the time, Jennifer and I are on those calls, trying to encourage them to give us the best possible rating based upon the good things we've done in the previous year to improve our financial status. The policy we have from the city is to be at 25 to 30% of our unassigned general fund expenses in our general fund reserves. Back about five or six years ago, we fell down at one point to 9%, that's a very uncomfortable place to be, and it's a hard place to have those conversations with Moody's. With some great work by the council, mayor, over the years, finance staff and others, we've gotten ourselves back to a point where we now stand at 33% as of the end of this past year in the audit, at roughly eight million dollars. So it's a much better place to be, actually higher than that range, and I think Moody's has been satisfied, and so has our auditor, CLA. Good comeback. City's credit rating has improved as a result, back in 2019 through 2022, when I mentioned the hard times, when the general fund reserves were not looking good, we were A1. Now, when you say to most people, we have an A1 bond rating, you think of A1 steak sauce or something, it sounds really good, there are ratings better than A1. And we improved to one of those ratings, a step up at AA3 in January of 2023, and again, I can't stress enough the great work by council, mayor, finance staff, our financial advisor, Ellers, has been incredible to work with in the past few years since we had that dip. Everybody working together, we've gotten to a better rating, we've kept that rating ever since. It was reaffirmed by Moody's only about 10 weeks ago or so, at the end of July, still at AA3. It's hard for a community of our size to get much better than AA3 for a lot of reasons, we're just not large enough to have that upward mobility possibility that we would if we were an Oakley or an Oshkosh or somebody. And they did cite as part of the, what they gave us for a rating, that we have a strong financial position and modest fixed costs, so that's a good, we have good strengths, we have challenges too, but those are positives for our community. I'm not going to read through all this, but this is the status of our TIF districts, we have more active tax increment financing districts than we've had in a long time. We are looking at possible closing of four, which is downtown, seven, the original industrial district, Yellowstone, and nine, that's the one where the Ford Bank is located, in the 27, 28 range. That'll be wonderful, the joint review board will like that, and we'll get some more value onto the general tax rolls. Mall project, I gave a little report at the last meeting that we have added 11 million dollars in value due to that expansion with Hobby Lobby and other real companies coming there to the mall. The I State project, happening without any incentive from the city, is moving forward, down by QuickTrip on the southeast side, and there's not a lot of debt left in that district. Next Gen became the first project in our certified site in TIF 12, so that's off to a start now, getting some increment coming in in the next couple of years. The Dennyan project is actually doing really well, that housing development in the 21st and Washington Avenue is ahead of schedule in terms of the number of foundations put in, so it's really exciting to watch that take hold. There's been some other activity along the Veterans Parkway corridor in TIF District 13, through no incentive of us, we haven't paid a penny to help incentivize them, and yet that shows as increment to that district. No projects yet in 14, that's the one right in the Fleet Farm Marwood area, but again, we haven't put out money there, and we're getting the increment from the QuickTrip project that happened about that same time, so financially it's in good shape, we have to see if there's any more projects that can be done. And Winebrenner is expecting their new facility to be completed by 1231, so in a couple of months, and that will be good for us down the road, 70,000 square feet of industrial building there. Our TIS are performing very well overall, we have capacity to create new TIF districts, a lot, because we haven't got too much of our property in TIF districts right now, and I think we've used a TIF very effectively over the years, I really do, and again, I commend staff and councils in the past for making wise choices. You'll hear cities that make poor ones, and they end up struggling to get to the finish line with payout. Property values, our equalized value is at about two point, almost 2.3 million, that's an increase of 3.5% over last year, again, that's what the state says our property should be valued at. Our assessed value has increased minimally, 0.03%, right now we have it at 1.983 billion, that may change a little bit, we don't have the information from the manufacturing assessments as well, so that could go slightly in a direction one way or the other. But we've been hampered by, and you're going to hear me talk about this in terms of revenue, and that's our net new construction, last year was 1.01, which is not great anyway, compared to fast-growing cities, certainly, now it's 0.59%, and that's used as a factor to determine how much we can increase the levy by, and the amount that I think I put in the budget document, and then I'm going to show here in a minute, shows that 0.59 new construction increase does not lend itself to a lot more levy increase, which is hard for us to continue to meet our demands and services. Property tax rate, 51% of our revenue comes from general fund, the general fund revenue comes from property taxes, about 35% or so comes from state aid, and then the rest from an assortment of fines, forfeitures, and other fees. We are currently at $8.06 per thousand of our tax rate, that's lower than our neighbors, and it's interesting, because we recently went through a revale, and you might think, well, yeah, sure, Steve, we dropped down a lot when we did a revale, that's when your tax pay goes down. But Point and Wausau have also been through revales in the last two years as well, so their numbers of 852 for Wausau and 887 per Point are really not all that far from when they just had their revaluation, so it's a pretty close to an apples-to-apples comparison in how we're taxing our community, showing that we are below all of our comparables today. Okay, highlights of the recommended budget, I'll start with the good news, you know, people always say, you want the good news first or the bad news? I like the good news first, let's start there. We're getting a revenue increase of about $300,000 roughly from state aid, shared revenue being the bulk of that, transportation aid being a lesser portion, but a good bump, and the state has, they've come through in the last couple of years, we're very thankful, they held the line on shared revenue for a long time, but they've opened the pocketbook up a little bit, and that's been beneficial to the city of Marshfield and many others. We were anticipating a health insurance increase this year of close to 10% based on what we've been hearing, at the end it's coming at 2.6%, so that's a great benefit for us in terms of what we expected this budget to look like. Now, the bad news, I got there pretty quickly, sadly, the tax levy increase is only going to be $66,325 over last year. You say, how do you know that? We haven't decided what the tax rate is. You know, the way it's been working the last few years, it's really kind of back into the tax rate. When I first started here back in 2011, it's like, well, do you want a 3% increase, or a 2% increase, or a 1% increase in the tax rate? It really doesn't work that way. The amount that state law allows us to increase the levy is so small in recent years, that it's really just kind of plug that number in and work with what you've got. Other bad news, other than state aid, most of our revenues are flat, again, if you've been around for a while, you've heard this, you know, the things that come, the clerk's office licenses, the building permit fees, all these kinds of things go up a little bit, but for the most part, it's not a lot, it doesn't add up to a major revenue for us during the year. Other negatives, CPI has been near 3%, I think the last I saw was 2.9, so that increases the cost of our goods and services. We've had to make some expense cuts over multiple departments to get to the finish line, you've seen already, I shared this with you a few days ago, and I put it back in front of you tonight, some positions have been left vacant from among those that are currently vacant, either for part of the year or in some cases for the entire year. General fund expenses have risen about 3.1% over the 2025 budget, and you have to realize again that the bulk of our budget is wages and benefits, almost two-thirds of it fits into that category, so you're giving union increases to the fire and police union, you're giving reasonable raises to the employees in commensurate with the pay increase, the compensation plan we just had a couple of years ago, that's going to end up being the bulk of what you're facing. Yeah, goods and services go up, you know, supplies go up, all those kinds of things, but that's what's pushed us to around 3%. The exact municipal tax rate is not known yet, but you can imagine if all we can do is increase the levy by $66,000 on a $25 million budget and a roughly 11 million or whatever it is for property taxes, that's not going to be a massive change in the overall tax rate that the citizens see for the city of Marshfield. Personnel considerations, our intent is to adhere as closely as possible to the compensation pay plan, I think the council wants us to be there, it's painful when you talk about wages being the big issue for us in the budget, and saying, gosh, Steve, you know, how can we make this work? It's also painful to go every three or four years and have a conversation about doing a new compensation plan and paying a consultant $25,000 to do it, and to find out that we've already fallen below our comparables. So, you know, pay me now or pay me later is what it kind of comes down to, so we're trying to stay as close as we can to possible. I mentioned the CPI is 2.9%, the budget that I presented to you includes a 2% increase, so less than CPI, plus the steps to keep people moving through their pay range, and again, we have a nine-step pay range, some people may be at the top of it, most people are not, with successful performance reviews, they have the opportunity to move up in proficiency through their pay range to the higher end based upon how well they're performing their job. Health insurance going up 2.6%, as I mentioned, staff pays 15% of the premium, so figure that they're going to get 15% of that, and the city will pick up the remaining 85%. I proposed this last year, ultimately, the council reversed it, which I appreciate it, I get why, but I'm proposing it again, because I think we need to use this as a budget cut, even though I know it's kind of hard, but right now the HSA contribution from the city to our employees' health savings accounts is $1,000, is $1,200 for family, $500 for single, those who take single coverage, it's been that for a number of years now, my proposal is to reduce that to 1,000, family and 500, single, and that will save us some money. Other benefit costs remain relatively flat, when you step outside of health, you get into things like dental, life, you know, disability, and dependent care, those really don't change very much, there really, there's years when some of those don't even move anything, they end up at 0% from the previous year, so that's not a big factor. And then, as I mentioned, some positions are being refilled, others are staying vacant. And the biggest force, surprisingly, not really, is our fiscal condition, and not that we're doing poorly, I mentioned that our debt is in a reasonable place at 46%, that our general fund reserves at $8 million, that 33% of our general fund expenditures is above the range that the financial, the auditor would say is appropriate, 25 to 30%, that's a good place to be after all the years we've been fighting back, but still, as with most cities and villages across Wisconsin, fiscal condition is the biggest struggle, because revenues, aside from the last two years when the state has bumped up, state aid a little bit, remains the toughest part of trying to make the budget work and provide quality municipal services. Status of vacant positions, firefighter paramedics, we're adding two this year, that was because of the referendum, you remember that we passed, and they'll be coming on board, hopefully very shortly after 1126. Also proposing to fill an engineering position, either April or May, you know, right now we have two individuals who are in the acting roles of public works director and city engineer, we're not sure how this is going to shake out ultimately, but we are lacking a position among those top three, between city engineer, assistant city engineer, and public works director, so we need to have another individual in that role, somewhere in that range, and we're proposing to get that done in spring. We also have a civil engineer position, which has been vacant for a while, part of that is just trying to recruit, it's not been vacant for lack of effort, but again, hard to find people, the private sector is a chief competitor for our positions, they pay well, and they grab up a lot of people, but we're proposing to fill this in May of 2026, we actually have a potential candidate, someone who has interned with us and may be very possibly willing to come on board with us, it sounds like that's looking positive, but either way, we definitely want to have this in for two-thirds of the year in the city budget. We've had a lot of talk lately about the community development director, the need for it, Kristen Fish Peterson from Redevelopment Resources trumpeted that, that was one of her two main recommendations, along with creating an RDA and moving the CDA back to a housing role. The problem is simple, it's $160,000 with pay and benefits, so it's not that I don't want one, it's a matter of how to finance it, how to make it work in the budget, and we may have conversations along the line of that here in these meetings, but I could not find a way to make that work, so at the present time, that is not included in the 2026 budget. On the bright side, we do have positions now in zoning administrative that we'll be talking about here very shortly, with an individual who's been doing the job as part of his overall position for a while, and we have James on board as our planner, and those are very positive steps toward filling that department and helping it to operate more effectively. Equipment operator, one, I did not include this last year, I'm not including that position this year, there are things that do not get done ultimately, when you don't have full staff, and I recognize that, street crew does a marvelous job with the resources they have, Tim and his group are just outstanding, I wish I could fill all these positions, you know, to the maximum, but that one I'm not recommending including in this particular budget. And we had a part-time administrative associate in the clerk's department, working about 20 hours a week a couple of years ago, that person left, we have not refilled that, and in consultation with Jessica, we feel it's appropriate to continue to leave that vacant for the time being, as they're able to get by with the current staff, they have one position shared with the finance department. And then ordinance, there was not an ordinance officer position in this budget, just to explain this real quickly, as I did, and I put it on your tables again tonight, two years ago, we went into what I call a marriage, where the police department had two ordinance officers, and we were struggling here, and what we came up with is, there was some interest on those folks in being part of our department, so we created a situation where we had two people still, but they spent half their time, ordinance officers over for PD, they had their half of their time as zoning administrators, in fact, they had business cards, I believe, that said ordinance officer slash zoning administrator. They shared that, in recent times, it's become apparent that the two individuals, really their heart is in different places, one really wants to be an ordinance officer full-time, the other really wants to work here full-time. You'll be seeing that if you're in the Finance Budget Personnel Committee tomorrow night, as to what we're proposing to make that individual our zoning administrator full-time, but as a result of that, we have, there's been only one ordinance officer, FTE over there, and Jody is looking to get back to two FTEs, and that is not included in this budget as well right now. Future challenges and opportunities, development of a strategic plan, we've had a hard time finding dates, I hope we're locked in now for the two Saturdays in January, I've got what seems to be a solid majority of those who have not indicated any problems with that, hopefully we can keep that. Coming from that, I hope we can identify desired service levels, a lot of what we need to do is say, okay, what is it we need to do? And maybe some things where we say, you know what, maybe we don't need to provide the service at that level, that's a place where we can cut. Staff is really hesitant to talk about making cuts internally to reduce the budget, if we don't know what level of services our elected officials are desiring to protect, as opposed to those that they think might be expendable. So I'm hoping that the strategic planning process identifies some of that. I've said this for a couple of years now at least, if not longer, we need to look at expanding and increasing revenues, I know some of the things we presented in this room before are not looked at favorably, they're looked at as being, you know, taxes that we shouldn't be imposing on the public, there are things that are being used in other communities. We have a grant now, it appears, to get a, to do a stormwater planning, stormwater management plan that could look ultimately toward a stormwater utility, we're not there yet, but I encourage council to be open to potential revenue expansion, as many communities are doing at the present time. And then we need to keep pursuing economic development, I mean, we grow the community, we grow the business park, the industrial park, the residential base, that's obviously a big way that we increase the tax base and better this community. Challenges, the infrastructure needs keep growing, I'm sure you hear it, many of you tell me that, you know, you hear from people, when is my street going to be done? I've been waiting a long time. I've often said that one of the things that happened in our community that was both good and bad, so again, if you've been on council for a while, you've heard me say this more than a few times, but Marilyn Hardiker, I was told when I came here, was a big part of getting the streets paved, there were a lot of streets that weren't paved, and she had a passion for getting the remaining streets paved. Well, they were all paved in that era, you know what that means? They're all due for major work in roughly that era, you know, they all hit that mark of 40 years or whatever it is, and we're having a hard time trying to keep up with that. And then the revenue limits and rising operating costs are challenging, and a big one you've heard from Sarah before, when she's been here, recruitment and retention is a very difficult thing now, a lot of people fighting for, in some cases, a very limited number of bodies, especially in the world of economic, of planning and economic development and engineering, those in particular, I'm not saying that you're not having trouble, as I look at my staff right now, finding employees in other areas, but those in particular are people who are being gobbled up by the private sector, and there's some indication that even the number that are being gobbled up there are more limited, for whatever reason, if some people took COVID as a way out and left employment early, if fewer people are going into those professions, whatever it is, recruitment and retention is a big challenge for us, we're trying to make it, we're trying to make this an employer of choice, and we'll keep working toward that. So, and I apologize, I know I took probably longer than I generally have, but hopefully that's a good background for you. Next steps in the project, reminder, second meeting will be a week from tomorrow night, Tuesday, October 14th at 5:00 PM, third meeting will be Monday, October 20th at 6:00 PM, and then a fourth meeting if needed will be Monday, October 27th at 6:00 PM. We then need to publish the budget at least 15 days in advance of the public hearing in the local newspaper, we're proposing that for Friday, November 7th, and then the public hearing and adoption will be as part of a regular council meeting on Tuesday, November 25th. So, a lot of information, and thank you for bearing with me and allowing me to go through it, at this time, I would take any questions that you might have, and we can dive into a little bit of discussion, and then I'll eventually end up back up there by the Finance Budget Personnel Chairperson, and I'll go through the categories as we go down the agenda as far as what changes we've seen in budgets, up or down, individual budgets for this year.
All right, thank you, Steve. Questions from the committee? All right, I don't see anybody with any questions.
I've got one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Andrew, go ahead.
No, no worries. Am I good to go?
Yes, you're up, go ahead.
Okay. Steve, I know you mentioned this as an opportunity for next budget cycle, but have we looked at any alternative streams of revenue for this upcoming 2026 budget?
No, not particularly, I know we're, like I mentioned, that we're on the road to a potential stormwater utility, based on the fact that this body authorized us to move forward on a grant application for a stormwater management plan, and we, it appears we probably secured that, and we're going to move forward into the next step, and that may someday lead to a stormwater utility. You know, we brought forward the street lighting utility a year or two ago, and that wasn't looked at favorably, I know that there's other things out there like transportation utilities and wheel taxes, but to answer your question more directly, there's nothing in this particular budget that involves an additional revenue source particularly.
Okay. No, the reason I ask is I believe Mr. Warman asked to see a draft of the budget back in January, and we never saw one, it's similar to what was last year, when I'd asked for one back in January, and we didn't see anything until maybe July, August, and I think the whole point of, you know, asking to get our eyes on it early was so we could at least entertain these ideas, if we decide that a tax utility isn't in our best interest, at least we've considered it, whereas now we're sitting here in October, and we've got one option, and it's to cut, and it's not particularly great, and I don't think we're really doing our due diligence here by just coming in here every October going cut, cut, cut. This is my third budget session, or what do you want to call it, budget season? We've done the same thing, we've come in here and cut stuff, and it's to the point that now it's forward-facing stuff, and it's not particularly great and low for us to be doing.
I apologize for that, although I will say a little bit in our defense that I believe that Jennifer gave back in the summer, an overview of where we stood at that time, and went through a lot of numbers, you know, that really pointed out the fact that we were expecting a shortfall, I don't have the number with me, it doesn't matter the exact number, but indicating that that would have to be eclipsed in some way, shape, or form, and we were looking for council ideas as to whether they wanted to look at different ideas, whether it be revenue or areas of the budget, of the city employment that they thought we could cut, it maybe wasn't exactly what you're talking about, and to that degree, I truly apologize. But we tried to do that in But we tried to do that in June, you know, every year, and I think we, I think that was about the time that Jennifer did it last, you know, this past summer. It's hard when you, when you're talking in such high-level terms, but, you know, if we can get after that after the first of the year or soon, let's do it. We don't know a lot then, but we can certainly talk about other revenue sources and areas that you want to cut. I'm really hoping that a lot of this flows from the strategic plan that we put together, you know, starting in January and running through the winter. I hope that will identify where you want to go and where you don't want to go in terms of willingness to look at increased revenues and areas that you think we really could cut. Seriously, areas where you think we're, if you believe that we're, maybe bloated isn't the right word, but services you don't think we really need, I hope it comes out of that conversation during the first quarter of this next year in a meaningful way.
Well, I'm not going to put words in Mr. Warman's mouth, so I'll speak for myself here, but I think the whole point of looking in January is the fact that it gives us a full year to try to either identify new revenue streams or at least tinker with what potentially we might cut here. I mean, getting a presentation in July is six months down the road. We're kind of behind the eight ball at that point. I think putting our hopes and dreams on this, you know, plan in the future is great, but we still need to be mindful of the fact that we still have challenges. I mean, if we look at it in January, probably could have estimated pretty close to being a million short. Not exact, but knowing that it's a pretty significant shortfall, at least given us some options to consider. And then if we have the time, you know, we can do the due diligence to look into it as opposed to sitting here again, cutting stuff. So if I keep talking, just to repeat myself, and I'm not trying to do that, but I'm just trying to, you know, emphasize the fact that two years in a row now, we've had to see this in January, so we can at least test different options, and we haven't done so. And here we are once again, cutting things that no one enjoys doing. We're going to be sitting here for what, three or four hours tonight? And then how many more hours next Tuesday? And having to make ugly decisions of what services is the community using right now that we're not going to offer next year. Not particularly fun for you guys, or for council for that matter. I know we throw around who's the bad guy here, but at the end of the day, it doesn't really matter, and the fact is that we're ending up with zero options outside of cutting, and that's not good.
Yeah, I sincerely apologize, and your point is duly noted and received. And, you know, let's, let's make sure that as we start that strategic planning conversation in January, that this is, if not hand in hand, it's right there with it. I mean, it's, it should be hand in hand with it, so I do apologize.
Okay. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. All right. So we're going to move on to F. Review of individual budgets as noted below. Action may be taken and/or motions may be made at this meeting regarding one of the more of the budgets. Any budgets not reviewed at this meeting will be added to the agenda for the next budget meeting on Tuesday, October 14th at 5:00. In the past, we've conducted this meeting in a variety of different ways. I would encourage this council that if you have questions, to go ahead and ask those at the end of each presentation instead of trying to keep a mental list in your head at the end, because I know after a while it can be kind of overwhelming, and you may forget what you want to ask. So that is the plan. So go ahead and raise your hand and ask questions if you so have them, okay? We're going to start with general government, the common council budget.
Yeah, thank you. If it's okay with everybody playing off what Rebecca just said, I like to go through the groupings and what's new, what's different, what's higher, what's lower, and why is higher or lower. And then we'll get to the end of general government, and then later on we get to the end of public safety. Then if there's any questions you have on any, but all the relevant department heads, I believe, are here in the room that can address your questions. So let's get out with general government, and I'm not looking at the page, even in my book here. Okay, 29. I'm kind of playing off my own notes at this point, but you'll notice that the council budget is down about $26,000. That's largely more than half because of the fact that we no longer fund Job Center. We severed that relationship in the spring of 2025. That's $15,000. $8,000 is also lower, having to do with publishing and those costs that we believe we can, we can get by with less. And then we've reduced the legal fees by about $2,500 based upon numbers that we're observing. And remember, we charge some of the legal fees to council that Attorney Wolfgram incurs based upon the usage directly by members of this body. Historic preservation, absolutely flat, same dollar amount as last year, $3,000. Municipal court, the only change is really, and you're going to hear this on some of the budgets, so I might as well just put it out there, basically wages and benefits of the individual who serves as a municipal court clerk. The budget goes up by $9,000. That's not just wages, it's also coming with it FICA, you know, WRS and all those things. The budget for our attorney, up $10,000. And that is to reflect actual costs that we're incurring, that's basically adjusting to what we believe that we need to have to cover. The city attorney budget, I'm sorry, city administrator budget is down quite a bit. But $34,000 of this is based upon PEP, and it's based upon the Public Employee Health Plan. No, post-employment. I knew I'd say that wrong. Post-employment health plan and what we might expect to pay out for retirements coming up. People, many of our employees are in that through their employment here, and based upon possible retirements, we expect that's an amount we believe we can reduce compared to what we had in 2025 in that line item. And then, let's see. And then wages and benefits up about $20,000, but overall, it's a, overall, it comes up ultimately to be about $11,000 up, which is not a lot on the size of that budget. Clerk's budget, up about $8,000. It's entirely wages and benefits. Nothing else of any note in that budget. The elections budget, up $43,000. You can probably guess why. Two elections in 2025, four elections expected in 2026. And the cost of all the, everything that's involved with that, including paying poll workers and so forth, is expected to be an additional $30,000, and then another $12,000 for additional supplies for the added elections. The IT budget is $132,000, which sounds like a lot. However, 118,000 of that is made up in three items that you have at least tentatively blessed in the CIP that we presented to you this summer. That'll be $65,000 for the Microsoft Office upgrade. Which, the things I'm about to mention in Eng's budget are pretty much tied to the fact that support is being lost at this point, otherwise in these items. $65,000 for that. Microsoft SharePoint, $27,000. And also doing the pen test at $26,000. Those three add up to 90% of that $132,000 addition. You can imagine that wages and benefits are also out there too, adding up to some money. Finance is basically flat after you take out the expenditure restraint program contingency. You know, we talk about this at the end of every budget process, that we have an inflated contingency of a million plus, but we do it for the benefit of qualifying every year for the expenditure restraint program. For those who are newer, that's a program that we, we want to be part of. We want to qualify because all the cities and villages across Wisconsin that qualify get to have a portion of a big pot. And it's based upon how many qualify determines what you'll get. We typically get between $400,000 and $500,000. And that's based upon keeping your budget within a certain minimal increase over the previous year, based on CPI and net new construction. We, this is a double negative, but we never, don't want to qualify for that money. I can't imagine foregoing $500,000 in, you know, 2027 by saying we're not going to qualify for 2022. The assessing budget is up about $5,000. Again, pay and benefits is about 70% of that for the individual in that department. City Hall, the building that we have here, the city hall maintenance is up 6,000. Again, that's pay and benefits for the person who does most of the, that work in this building of caretaking, making sure that we've got a functional, successful city hall. Wildwood Plaza budget is down about 9,000, and that's mainly because we're moving down the gas about $7,000 on that utility based upon what we're seeing for this past year. We feel like we can drop that estimate. We're not making any suggested change in bad debts expense. And currently, we're projecting a $5,000 increase in the non-departmental insurance. That's basically vehicles, equipment, and public liability insurance. So a lot of them fairly flat. Some of them with some bumps that I mentioned. And at this point, I would look for any questions, concerns. Again, I mentioned all the affected department heads that cover these areas, I believe, are in the audience.
All right. Any questions on general government, the changes that were suggested or made? I see none. Oh, gosh, I'm sorry, Andrew. Andrew, if I missed you, just yell out. I'm just still not used to looking.
I raised my hand super late, so that's not on you, Rebecca. That's on me. Just, I'll start with this, and I'll probably be asking it for every department, so if they want to get ready, they're more than welcome to. But what was cut from the budget originally here? Like what cuts were made for 2026?
From what the department heads suggested? Or from previous years?
I guess both. Like, what was cut to try to meet that million-dollar shortfall?
Well, one of the council members did request a list of that, and I think I maybe have sent it to you by email a couple of hours ago. You probably haven't had a chance to look at it. That's where all the cuts made and the revenue changes were included. I can take that out here. Did you happen to receive that at all? I apologize it was late, but it was a kind of request.
Okay, let's see it here.
I kind of, and I'm not trying to be dismissive at all. I kind of hate to try and read through this. Some of the areas you see specific reasons why in terms of, you know, like electricity. We see a reduction based upon actual street lighting cost in this past year. We felt we could drop that by about $15,000. Others just show areas where some reductions were done. Some of those, many of those are tied to positions not being filled. So if you're not filling a position, not only are you not paying the wages, but you're also not paying social security and, and, you know, WRS and those kinds of things. And then toward the bottom, you see some more significant ones with respect to operating supplies, repair and maintenance, and that type of thing.
Andrew, are you finding that document?
Is it the one titled list of adjustments made?
No, it's a double, I have a double sided. It's two pages. One has revenues, and then the other one has expenses showing the initial request and the submitted budget.
Right. I guess it's not divided by departments, correct?
No, it's not. It's not. That's why I'm reading, that's why I've been, that's, that's why I'm reading what I've been reading, although I realize this is not. What I was reading a minute ago is the difference between last year's budget and this year's budget as opposed to what was submitted by department heads and what I'm proposing. So it's not, it's a little bit apples to oranges.
Right. Because I guess what I'm driving at is, because I know in the past, there's been, whether publicly or privately, some talk about, well, one department cut more than another, vice versa. And it was just kind of for frame of reference of, A, you know, what departments, you know, cutting more, and then B, more specifically, what did we cut? Because much like last year, I've got a feeling that we're going to be looking at a lot of forward-facing cuts here.
No, and I think if you, I only look back to last year, there was a list of cuts. It included, thinking of Park and Recreation, for example, you know, cutting the warming house for $2,000 and those kinds of things. And I do remember the list that you're talking about. I don't have a list that looking exactly like that right now.
Right. So I think, and maybe this is for next meeting or something, but I think that'd be helpful because, you know, you and I can sit here and look at this with, you know, these, the terms that we might be more familiar with, but the, the average citizen is probably looking at this going, why is it in Greek? I don't understand what's being cut here. Oh, and I guess I'd like to see what it means for the constituent as far as what's being cut.
Yeah. No, we can do that. I will make a broad statement here, though, and I'll try to do it as well as I can. The total number of cuts this year compared to last year is less, in part because, you know, the, the not filling positions certainly save a lot of money. The starting shortfall was less than it was last year. And truthfully, I got to be honest with you, with each year we go by, if there ever was fluff, there's less and less to cut. I mean, I think we, I think last year was an example of some of the things you saw in that list of things to cut that we weren't even fond of offering. So I think that the amount of cuts is probably down from '24 and '25, truthfully. But we can certainly look at producing the list you're talking about the way you want to see it.
Right. Because I guess, on one hand, I'm going to think, like you said, you know, Mr. Barg, the amount of cuts that we've done over the years, we probably don't have a lot of fluff or fat to cut anymore. And then secondly, and just maybe food for thought, and I know you've already thought about this, but having a position unfilled means one of two things. If that position is obsolete and we don't need it, which I highly doubt, or we need to fill it because there's some purpose that needs to be done and it's not being performed. I think that's harmful as well. So, yeah, we can balance a budget by not filling positions, but I don't think that's a long-term solution.
No, and that goes back to your comment, your comment earlier about the need for more revenue. I mean, I think if we sat here over the next four weeks and found, you know, $1,000 here and $2,000 there to cut, and, you know, and maybe more than that in some places, it might have some pain in some places. It might not have as much pain in other places. You know, we'd be hard pressed to get to the amount of money that is saved by not filling those positions either all year or at least for part of the year.
Okay. And then just one last thing, just to save my breath and probably spare the department heads then. So instead of asking each department that, or should I just expect a list to be sent out of what was cut from each department?
Yeah, yeah, we'll work toward that. I think we should be able to do that. Yeah. I mean, I, again, I don't see, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to hold you at bay. We will, we'll find a way to do that. We made them consciously. We met individually with department heads. You know, and what we do is just to remind people what we do. We've done this last, I think, three years maybe. Jordan and Jennifer and I meet individually with every department head or members of the department. Sometimes they have their second-in-command with them and so forth. And we go through it, and typically we say, look, it looks like you've been maybe not using as much of this, your, your training budget or your supply budget as you've been budgeting yet. I think we could, they'll agree that, I think we could cut it back by 5,000 or 10,000. So the cuts that have been made, for the most part, are made in conjunction with those individuals. It's not like they woke up one day and found out that their budget was being sliced. So I think we should be able to resurrect that list that you're talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
Natasha, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm looking at page 43, and it's the city hall budget. I'm assuming that this is one person. Is that correct? Is the, is this the salary and benefits for one person?
Yeah, Jeff Multer is our, I forget his actual title, Building Services Coordinator or something of that nature. Okay, facility manager, yeah, facility management.
Okay. Is this just for the city hall building, or does this include the community center, different buildings as well?
I believe.
Just this building?
I believe this is just for city hall, correct? I know, as Josh is coming up, and I apologize for not knowing offhand, but Jeff Multer does a great job of assisting other, other department heads in other buildings, but.
Yeah, his budget that you see, the city hall budget is primarily for here, but, so he does assist at any of the city buildings, but like the operating expenses, the maintenance and repair, that's all for this city hall building.
Okay.
And we've been, we've been very lucky to have him because he, he'll work with Jill at the library or Justin at Second Street Community Center and others to identify, you know, what needs to be done and be able to plug into, sometimes avoiding consultant fees and those types of things.
Okay. So I'm seeing a salary of $71,852, and then it looks like benefits that are roughly about $23,000. I'm just wondering, is that comparable to the custodian at Parks and Rec? And is this actually a market rate salary?
Well, I, I think, you know, sometimes you look at the titles, and you have to realize that they're different jobs. I mean, I don't know what that person does at Parks and Recreation. Maybe Justin could illuminate on that. But what Jeff Multer does for us is, I mean, pretty full service in terms of the boilers and the, and, you know, the HVAC systems and so forth.
We only have a half-time custodian, so he works just mornings, like five to nine, mostly cleaning, vacuuming, emptying garbages, tidying up things of the community center itself. Where Jeff is more troubleshooting of HVAC, electrical, gas, more larger, more complex operations. Jeff wouldn't be doing the cleaning itself, so our part-time custodian is just community center.
Okay. Okay. So not the same job. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and truly, if I can add to that, before Jeff Multer came along, the person who was doing the job here before was really doing much more of a custodial role and not building maintenance in the way that the current position is structured.
Natasha, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, let me get back to where I was. Here are just two seconds. Too many papers.
I know it is.
So much.
I know.
It's destined to be huge. Okay. So now we are going to be moving on to public safety. And this is going to be presented again by Steve, and you'll start to find the public safety. And you'll start to find the public safety things on page 47. Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, thank you. For law enforcement, the budget is projected to go up by 114,000. And that sounds like a big number. That's because law enforcement is certainly by far the biggest budget that that we have. Uh, so it's it's really not that much in the overall scheme of things. In fact, the the increase in in wages is actually greater than that. So, um, it's actually some, a pretty tight budget overall. Ordinance is is projected to be up by 4,450, that's totally pay and benefits. Uh, crossing guards, no change from 2025. Fire department's broken into two sections, there's protection and prevention. Fire protection is up 110,000, but you're going to continue to hear this song from me for a while. 100,000 of that is pay and benefits. Uh, and much of that is is union wages, but salaries overall. Uh, the fire prevention budget is up 38,000, which is slightly less than the 40,000 increase in pay and benefits. So beyond that, there's really not much of an increase in their proposed budget. And then emergency management is up 1,200 and and it's singular item if you haven't had a chance to look at it yet. There's a an emergency management conference that that they're asking to go to, and I think it's warranted. We're trying to do more emergency management work in our city in terms of preparing for disasters, whether it be an active shooter, whether it be a tornado. And it sounds like this program is a good one and worth 1,500 to attend. Uh, that's all I have for public safety. And once again, we have all the relevant department heads and and people with them in the audience.
All right, does anyone have any questions right now on the public safety presentation? Part of the budget. Okay, I don't see anybody for that one either. So next on the list is going to be the public works.
See, well, that begins on page, uh, 59, 59?
Yep.
Yep. Uh, public works administration is up 10,000. Um, that is, again, basically looking at the the things we talked about with wages and benefits, which are up 17,000. Uh, professional services up 10,000. Uh, but, um, health insurance is down 15,000 and I didn't really even ask, but that's presumably because of someone taking a lesser insurance, perhaps single instead of family or something of that nature. Engineering administration is down 12,000 over last year. Not much to talk about there. Uh, street administration is up 4,500. But that is a very small percentage of their 120,000 budget. And it's, again, once again, it's pay and benefits. Highway and street maintenance is down 5,000. Pay and benefits itself are up 35,000 in that department. Again, this is a very large budget for us. Uh, it's upwards of a million dollars, but that's not uncommon to see that increase. Uh, but there's a 20,000 reimburse expense adjustment. And then 10,000 in motor pool charge drop over last year. Motor pool charge is based upon the use of equipment and the way that's charged out in our financial system in the internal service fund. So that accounts for most of the difference there. Moving on to snow and ice, I gotta get through myself, give me a second. That's an unpredictable budget based, of course, on the number of, um, snow events we have during the winter. Sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes up a lot. But anyway, um, proposal is for an increase of 109,000. Pay and benefits being 43,000 of that amount. And we're increasing the motor pool charge of by 50,000. And that's, again, based upon the number of times the the equipment will be used for these major events. We've been very lucky the last two years. We've had two very mild winters in terms of, uh, snowstorms and and ice events. We can't expect that to go on forever, so we're bumping that up 50,000. And then raw material increase of 11,000 as well. Highway and street cleaning, um, budget of around 300,000. It's an increase of 27,000 over last year. 17,000 of it being pay and benefits. And we have, uh, let's see, repair and maintenance up 5,000. And motor pool at 5,000. One of the things we're we're doing now is we're disposing of street sweeping to the Marathon County landfill. And, uh, that has a cost for us in terms of, uh, the motor pool expense. Traffic control, a budget of about a quarter million is up 9,000 from last year. Um, and pay and benefits is about 5,000 of that amount, leaving obviously very little for the remainder. Street lighting, we budgeted last year for 2025 at 260. We're budgeting 245 this year and that that reduction of 15,000 is is based upon uh, the estimate of how much electricity we'll use. We've seen some indications that maybe it's still going to be a little bit less than it's been in large part, probably because of LED lighting being used by the, uh, lighting being replaced by utilities. And that that should continue to increase as more of our lighting becomes LED. We should hopefully see at least cost remaining, you know, fairly flat, maybe even dropping a little bit, hopefully. Sidewalk maintenance repairs, I'm up on, um, page 70 at this point. Uh, a drop of about, uh, about 12,000 of thereabouts. Um, and again, that's motor pool usage, the usage of the, uh, equipment for the work done. Storm sewer maintenance is up a lot, it's up 190,000. Uh, but the reason is, is 150,000 of that is the stormwater management, uh, financial feasibility study that we're doing. The analysis is going to be done to look, as we mentioned earlier, at potentially implementing a stormwater utility for the city ultimately. But this is a plan that we we got a grant for and this is our, um, the payment for that. Also a 45,000 increase in, uh, repair and maintenance, and that's largely because of our mowing detention basins. We have to to be mowing some of those. Moving on to the parking budget, I mean, it's not even worth talking about, it's a 200 drop, so basically flat. Same on the airport to follow, 7,000 decrease from last year. And again, I said, I mean, 700, not 7,000, 700 increase, I said it wrong. 700 decrease, those those two, parking and airport, basically flat. And we get to, uh, refuse and recycling. The refuse is contractual, we don't really have much to say. There's a price hike that's going to increase us by 14,000, going from 609,000 to 623,000. Uh, that's built into the contract, I think it maybe an eight year contract or something like that. But whatever it is, there are increases built into that contract. And then recycling, we're proposing a a 10,000 reduction. And that's, again, largely due to a drop in the motor pool line item. And that's what I have for notes of, uh, adjustments under the public works category. Did I skip one?
New sidewalk, oh, well, oh.
Which one?
Did you do the new sidewalk?
I thought I did, but maybe I didn't. I'll trust if I didn't.
I I don't know, I got 12, decreasing 12,000 for sidewalk maintenance.
Uh, yeah, I I thought I said, but maybe, oh, maybe I did, I'm, yeah, you were watching me, I didn't. Uh, yeah, 12,000 and that's, again, motor pool, let let's use. I apologize, thank you, good catch. And that will be it for public works category. And again, you know, all the relevant department heads are available.
All right, I see some questions. Uh, Mr. Wormin, you are up first.
Thank you. All right, uh, I got a couple. Um, first one, for snow and ice, we we had an increase there. And I know you said, you know, we had a couple of mild winters, definitely agreed. So what are we basing this number on?
Derek, can you give the page number?
Uh, yes, all right, let me pop. 66, thank you, Mr. Marshall.
I I think I'll ask if 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 either Tim or or somebody from, you know, Josh, if somebody could come up and address that. Because I I don't know exactly how that estimate was prepared. I know we need an increase because we've had two very mild winters.
Working with finance, the the best way to judge this is just off of usage from years past. Um, not being able to predict that. We did look at the farmer's almanac, our asphalt contractor is telling us it's going to start snowing sooner than we were hoping for. Um, so we're, we are expecting a a heavy snowfall season, so.
Okay, and that's perfect, that's exactly what I was looking for. I figured it was as simple as that, I just wanted to make sure we have, I like to stand on. Um, all good there. Um, second one, we've seen a lot of increase, uh, in the last three categories now for administrative, right? We have salary increases, we have insurance changes. Is this all lining up with what we projected last year after we decided to vote on giving those increases and changes uh, when we revise the upcoming budget?
Well, I I think, you know, as far as the the wages and benefits, I think we we.
Thanks, Tim.
As as my remembers, as we pledged to try and come as close to to CPI as we could so that we don't fall behind. And then, and again, we talk about wages as in in isolation, how much are people getting paid? The biggest thing is the adjustment of the scale so that, you know, if an accountant starts at A and and the top of their range is B, as we have increases in the inflation rate, are we keeping up with that so that what's going on in point and rapids and was, how we're keeping up with? I think I think we're doing fairly well to adjust the scale by 2%, even though CPI is 2.9% given our financial constraints. Uh, you know, health insurance, if you mentioned that, I mean, we don't directly control it. Uh, we we try everything we can to keep employee, uh, consumerism up. And I I'm I'm good to hear, I'm I'm glad to hear that we're at 2.6%. I think we have pretty good consumers of insurance here at City Hall. You know, if you get health, you know, cancer or something like that, you don't control it. But, um, I feel good about where we're at with both of those.
Okay, and and I won't beat on the issue that Andy mentioned earlier. But part of the reason I asked is like, I think if we had started reviewing this earlier, we knew when we voted on it last year that we were going to take a hit because we were approving a a higher pay for a lot of people and it was going to affect the budget. But I think not preparing, now we're coming in and I think we're seeing a little panic because we're going, oh, my God, we're a million short. But part of that is stuff that we anticipated coming in from last year.
Yeah, pretty much.
Um, the last question I had is, you mentioned the grant for the 150,000, page 71. Uh, that would be for the storm sewer maintenance. Is the 150,000 our portion after the grant or do we expect that money to come back later?
Good, let Josh handle that one.
That's, as a 50 50 grant, the 150 is the entire cost.
Yeah, so there there's 75,000 shown as revenue from the grant.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was thinking about, I wanted to hear you say it.
Perfect.
Thank you. One of those expensive revenue both showing for the same item.
Derek, is that all? Okay, I think, Natasha, you're next.
Thank you. Multiple times during this section, you said there's going to be a drop sidewalks, there's a drop, um, recycling, there's a drop. And you said, um, there's a drop in motor pool expenses. Can you explain that, please?
Yeah, I'm trying to think if I'm the best person to explain it or not. I mean, we we have, Tim's starting to move, we have, uh, you know, we have equipment, we have the the 701 Internal Service Fund, we have what we call an M and E rate based upon, it's sort of like we're rent renting equipment from ourselves.
Yeah, and a a lot of the increase that you see in the snow budget, if we're not plowing snow, those motor pool expenses that we raise the snow budget will likely be increased in other budgets because we're able, there's no snow on the ground, so we're able to do roadwork still without the snow. So, uh, the motor pool increases in one budget, a lot of times with the decreases that he was talking about in some of the others, they do offset depending on the weather.
Yeah, and and again, just to kind of reiterate, reiterate what I said a minute ago, we're sort of renting equipment from ourselves per se. I mean, the whole, the whole idea is we, you know, we buy a piece of equipment, we want to be having enough money to replace that in 10 years or 12 years. So we're putting money into the fund based upon the usage of those pieces of equipment. And, uh, that's why you see it go up and down, sometimes based upon, in the case of snow, whether or not it was used. In other cases, whether or not it's needed at the level that we felt we needed it.
Thank you. Jen, you're up next.
Thank you. Um, I have, actually have a motor pool question as well. How do we figure out the rates of what we're charging? Sorry, Tim.
Oh, so we do use the state DOT rates, um, to charge each each budget individually. They usually come out every January. Uh, there's only been one year that I'm I'm aware of where they did change multiple times in one calendar year. But usually every January, a new DOT, um, rate book comes out and we update our equipment rates to those.
And that really was the best thing we did in a long time, I think, because we used to have meetings every year about adjustments and they were contentious even internally about how to make adjustments to the M and E, machinery and equipment rate. Uh, now we just take it from the state of Wisconsin and it's a cleaner and clearer way to do it.
Okay, um, so I just have a follow up question on the motor pool. Um, so when the each individual department is charged out from the, uh, the use of borrowing equipment from the streets department and, um, when they pay this and it's charged out, um, what percentage of what they're paying is going into that fund to replace equipment? And what is being used as your budget for wages and things like that?
In the 701? So so that, and all those revenues come back into the 701 fund? And the 701 is what houses that revenue? Um, each year, I I don't have it right on the tip of my tongue for the separation between the expenses each year and and what we have in remainder. Um, but we could pull that up if you were looking for a.
Okay, just so for clarification, so when somebody, um, so when public works pays their their portion of their motor pool, the use of whatever they used, you're taking part of that and putting it in the fund for replacement of of that equipment, some way down the line? And you're using the other part for what?
So the 701 receives all that motor pool funding.
Okay.
The labor and and the cost to manage that fleet, that salary comes out of the 701. Those those staff members are 701 employees.
Gotcha.
And you'll see a, uh, labor wage.
Okay, so to, so to be clear, it all goes into the fund.
Yep.
Part of it is used to buy equipment, part of it is used to pay later.
To manage the equipment we have.
Right, okay, that's what I thought, okay.
The fuel depot, the building.
Yep, gotcha.
Yeah, and later on, when we get to that fund, you'll see us, you know, proposing to spend another, you know, 400 to 500,000 to replace the equipment that is now antiquated or in need of replacement for some reason. So, yeah, it's all self contained, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go on to the Health and Human Services, which is page 76.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the cemetery increase is at 38,000. That's basically two items, one being, uh, wages and benefits of about 16,000. And then, uh, the purchase of a piece of equipment, a Kubota, uh, to be able to, um, to maintain the the grounds. Uh, that's about 23,000, I believe. Do I have that correct? Or did I, did I miss, did I misstate that? I apologize if I misstated that.
It's to, uh, identify the equipment that cemetery is using to repay the M and E fund. So we're not purchasing out of that number, we're repaying the M and E.
It's motor pool.
Yep, it's motor.
And I've got MP next, I don't know why I said that, because I've got MP right next to that on my feet.
So, uh, historically, the cemetery equipment was not part of the motor pool account, the 701. It was independent, it was just purchased through the budgetary process. And it wasn't part of that, it was decided a number of years ago as we replaced that equipment over the years, the new equipment would go into that fund and then repay it and reimburse it like everything else. So this is kind of that process starting forward.
Thank you, Justin. Any questions? Uh, seeing none, okay. Um, Andrew, do you have a question? Oh, Natasha, Jesus, I'm sorry, I'm looking at 50 screens up here. Thank you.
You're good.
Um, okay, so again, I'm just looking, I'm sorry if I'm not understanding this. Um, I'm looking at the employees for the cemetery. So, Justin, um, how many employees are in with your cemetery? Because it says there's permanent employee, permanent employee, temporary employee.
There's two full time employees allocated to that budget and seasonal employees. Typically, there's two, but it's seasonal, so just think of two employees at all times.
Okay.
We typically have elderly gentlemen that work in the spring and the fall. And then when the college kids or high school kids are out of school, they come and work. And then the elderly people come back. So if you're not counting heads, it's just two positions that kind of rotate throughout that.
So the 125,000 that's split between two people?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, so next is, uh, culture and recreation, that's going to start on page 80.
Okay, thank you, and I I do apologize again, Justin, I'm sorry for the mismischaracterization of of that issue with the equipment. Uh, too many little scribbles on my piece of paper. On the library, I'm at page 82. Uh, again, library budget is proposed to increase by 40,000 in 2026. Uh, pay and benefits up 25,000. Health insurance down 47,000. Health insurance down forty-seven thousand, and I believe that's because of either people probably either not taking it or people are. Oh, oh, the, okay. Uh, re, reimburse expenses down uh somewhat and then desktops, uh, purchase of new desktops is down seventeen thousand twenty-twenty-five. But overall, it's a forty thousand dollar increase. Uh, I'm sorry, I'll keep going on here. The Oak Avenue Community Center, uh, increase of twenty thousand dollars. And that's, you're gonna hear this for the Second Street Community Center, the exact same thing. You've heard about what's going on with the repair and maintenance issue. With Oak Avenue Community Center, it's the chimney, chimney liner, the project that we didn't get any bits for that we're gonna have to do in twenty-twenty-six, so we're estimating twenty thousand. And uh, with the one right after that, the Second Street Community Center on page eighty-five, it is the water leak that we're still trying to hit our arms around and, and so we're budgeting twenty thousand and that would be uh probably for identifying the problem. Uh, we, we aren't sure at this point what the problem might need in terms of rectifying it, but we, we know we're gonna have to at least do some uh effort to find out what, what is creating that issue. So both of those are flat, uh, with the exception of those two projects. Parks operation maintenance on twenty, I'm, I'm on page eighty-six, increase to twenty-four thousand. Pay and benefits making up nineteen thousand of that, so seventy-five percent of that amount. The uh park operation, I'm sorry, the Parks and Recreation Administration, up thirty thousand dollars. It's entirely pay and benefits. Recreation programming budget on page eighty-nine, uh, increase of eighteen thousand. And that's largely in other contractual, I believe, I'm, I'm looking at the wrong, I'm right here. Yeah, an increase in other contractual, talk about that in a minute. Uh, I, I could talk about it right now, obviously. Uh, fifteen thousand being budgeted for trips for seniors. And if in fact that occurs, that there's an offsetting revenue, and this is not, we're not doing this uh out of our goodness of our heart, only uh, we're budgeting the same amount in increased revenue, we'd be charging the people for those trips, so it's an offset. If we end up not doing it for some reason, if people don't sign up, the expense will be lower and the revenue that offsets will be lower. Uh, special events on page ninety. Uh, increase of seven thousand dollars. I feel like I'm looking at the wrong one for a second here. Give me a second. No, that, that budget is, is basically flat. That budget, there's no, there's no change in that budget at all. I was looking next at the praise holidays and signs, or there's an increase of seven thousand dollars. And uh, six thousand dollars of that is motor, motor pool, which we've talked about previously and how it's calculated. The final four budgets in the Culture and Recreation category are effectively flat. Zoo on page ninety-two at a fifteen hundred dollar increase, but that's on a three hundred and forty thousand dollar budget. Uh, the Aquatic Center, a decrease of three hundred dollars on their budget, which is roughly, what, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand? Increase of the fair of nine hundred dollars up to ninety-eight thousand, and that's a contractual increase for the agreement we have with the Central Wisconsin State Fair Board for a management agreement. And then UWSP Marshfield, an increase of three hundred dollars, also again relatively flat. And those are the changes in the Culture and Recreation section.
Okay, any questions on that section of the budget? Okay, I don't see any. So next up is Conservation and Development, and that is page ninety-seven of your budget book.
Okay. The uh Industrial Park Budget, there is a note, um, wait here a second. I gotta been different, the wrong order, don't I? You have Conservation and Development first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, the uh, that's a total, I'm sorry. Yeah, Industrial Park uh is flat, eleven thousand dollars, no change. My apologies on fumbling there for a minute. Uh, the next one, the Development Services, we've always called it, says here City Planner and Economic Development. Uh, that is an increase of ten thousand dollars. Pay and benefits being a fifteen thousand dollar increase. And then there, there is one error, uh, one calculation we need to change. We uh, we have, we do weights and measures program where we contract with the state uh to do our weights and measures inspections for ten thousand dollars. We under an ordinance that you approved a couple of years ago, bill back to the benefiting businesses, those who have scales, you know, gas stations and others, we bill that money back. So we collect the offsetting revenue, but in the budget you have, the revenue is shown, uh, but the ten thousand dollar expense is not shown. So that would be an additional expense to this department budget, meaning that instead of a ten thousand dollar increase, it would be overall a twenty thousand dollar increase in Development Services. And then Forestry is a two thousand dollar increase on a nearly three hundred thousand dollar budget, so that's basically flat as well.
All right, um, any questions? Natasha.
Thank you. So for City Planner and Developer, um, we have staff at three hundred and ninety-four thousand. So we have the um, Ordinance Officer, who is now be gonna be the Senior City Planner after tomorrow's meeting, if that passes. And then we have um James, who's in, in planning. Anyone else who's in that department?
Uh, well, the rest of the department, made up of the building inspectors and the administrative.
That's all in there, okay, perfect.
And as far as the zone, zoning position right now, I mean, we've, we've had, um, in twenty-twenty-four and twenty-five, we've had the position of, uh, shared with PD. So the wages and benefits, you know, even if we have one full-time as opposed to, to two half-time, you know, it comes out the same. So that, that's always been budgeted, uh, to continue having a full-time position.
And then for Forestry, um, for this a hundred and twenty thousand, is that for one employee or how many employees is that for?
We have one full-time employee. Oh, I will let, I will let Justin come up. Yeah, you're playing rock, paper, scissors?
Yeah, we're doing rock, paper, scissors. Uh, that's, one employee's out of there, but uh, Tim's maintenance staff or uh, Public Works guys will do removals and trimming all winter long. So there's one employee out there, but that may vary. They're busy doing snow, that might be a lot less. If it's not a lot of snow, they might be, they'll be doing a lot of tree removal and trimming.
Okay, thanks, that makes sense.
Anyone else with questions? Okay, next up is Other Financing, which you'll see starts at one oh three.
Okay, uh, yeah, that is a, uh, right placement here. That's up two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over last year, which I know is a lot, but the, the lion's share, almost all of it, is those two uh firefighter, paramedic positions. That's a transfer from the General Fund, you know, as we receive the tax revenue uh to the EMS Fund for those two positions. It's a total of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. The remaining eighteen or nineteen thousand dollars is um the uh, the props for the fire training center, that's a CIP project. That's a transfer being made in as well.
All right, any questions about that? Okay, I don't see any, any questions. So we will be moving on to the Special Revenue Funds, which starts on page one oh six.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the room tax, as, as you, most of you know, if you've been around for a while, seventy percent of that goes to the uh, Visit Marshfield Board. And the other thirty percent is kept by the city for projects. And so most of the money that is used for that, Justin, uh, budgets in the Capital Improvement Plan, it's for, for projects for our parks, Brain Park and others. And uh, right now, I think the last I, I remember checking, we have about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars roughly a year that we have available. So that's, that's really how that plays out. Um, you know, there's, there's not much to, to report except for the fact that the annual CIP show is the expenditure of those funds. Um, next item is the Economic Development, the, the two oh five fund, as we oftentimes call it. And that budget is uh about six hundred and some thousand dollars. Um, gotta get that page myself. Okay, it's on here. Yeah, there it is, okay. Well, the, let me just go through the, yeah, six hundred and fifty-six thousand. Let me just hit the high points of what makes up that six fifty-six. I won't talk about every single line. Uh, two hundred thousand of that is a developer incentive. We've got reserved for a project, I know we've been talking about one in closed session, I think the council's aware of. So that's what that's targeted for right now. A hundred thousand is a transfer for the senior, the planning position uh that we did last year and uh continue for this year. Another a hundred thousand is un, unallocated adjustment from last year, that we're just kind of taking care of to move that to two oh five. Then we get into the ones that are um related to some of the projects and some of the, the other uh e- entities that we work with. For example, right now, there's eighty-one thousand dollars in for the, for Mackey and Main Street, fifty-three for Mackey and twenty-eight for Main Street based upon the, the, the uh, the direction from council at the last meeting after the presentations by those entities. We have seventy-five thousand dollars in for the West Second Street Project, the lion's share of that being to the consultant and DeWall and Associates along with some ancillary costs. We have sixty thousand dollars that we're proposing potentially to transfer for repurchasing land in Daniel's Edition, which we don't want to do, but we have two lots sold in Daniel's that have not been built upon yet, construction hasn't started, they have until spring of twenty-twenty-six to begin construction, or the city has the opportunity under those agreements to repurchase those lots. Sixty thousand will not uh cover the cost of, of those two lots entirely, but it's, it's a, a dollar amount that we can use toward repurchase if we have to do it with one or both of those. Uh, twenty-five thousand for the Building Revitalization Program. Remember, we got an eight thousand dollar grant, at least it appears we will, from the county for the formerly called the facade program downtown for interior and exterior renovations. And the, the balance is really kind of an assortment that, you know, I, um, besides, oh, the Wenzel Family Plaza, thirty-eight thousand nine twenty for the event and program coordinator salary. Then we get down to the smaller ones that are kind of hit and miss, uh, smaller amounts. Moving on to Public Safety Funds, these are in, we call it, I think, the two oh six fund. Uh, it's the Police Department, it's typically donations, the grant money that comes in and it's used for purposes, um, you know, things that are needed in the department that they can use to, I think it might be K-9 perhaps, I'm not sure what all gets covered in that. But these are not tax dollars, they end up in those funds, they're, they're coming from either donations or grants. This is Improvement District, for those of you who've been around for a little while, you know that they're basically taxing themselves downtown in the bid. And uh, this will be their second year of taxing themselves to a total of eighty thousand dollars. But they're the collection agent and they've agreed again to pay the money to the Main Street Organization in its entirety. So it's an in or out for the city, where the middleman, collecting the eighty and then remitting it back to Main Street Marshfield. Shared ride taxi service, kind of great program for us over the years. Um, ninety-plus percent is typically covered by either uh the uh grants from the federal and state government or fees from, from riders, the fairs. I think it's, it's been somewhere around fifty-five percent from federal and state grants and thirty-five percent from fairs in the city. Ends up paying potentially up to uh ten percent in a local shares, it's called. And uh, been budgeting around a hundred thousand dollars in that neighborhood to cover our cost of that program. And then finally, I think the last one, uh, no, there's a few more on the next page, I'm sorry. Communicat, Communications Budget, we talked about this a lot when uh Tom Lux was with us. He's not here tonight, uh, he's on vacation, but, um.
Oh my god.
Oh my gosh, I hadn't even looked. Hi, Tom. Yeah, thank you. I apologize, I, I knew you were, you said you were gonna be for tonight after being gone during the day, I'm sorry. Give me grace, I'm juggling a lot of things in my head right now, not very well apparently, but I'm talking to you. And I know, I know, I'm sorry, Tom. Anyway, we talked about the Communications Budget where we're seeing decreasing uh money from the franchise fee and yet the cost of two employees pay and benefits and some of the expenses are, are not going down. Uh, you saw the program, we're looking at fifteen thousand dollars from General Fund for the first time to contribute to this operation, but there's a lot of conversation that needs to be held by this body in strategic planning and other times to look at a sustainable model to keep that department thriving and growing. Uh, they're also gonna use fifteen thousand dollars from the two thirty uh five fund, which is their fund that's rolled over when they have excess. But otherwise, Tom's budget is up, I think, less than two percent over twenty-twenty-five. Municipal Court, Spencer and Stratford, there's not much to talk about, they contract with us uh to use our municipal court services and they get a certain percentage of the, the tickets, uh, fund revenue back. And then the Housing Fund, that's the Affordable Housing Fund, as you know, we captured about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars of uh increment from one year to five when we closed that district. Uh, and we're talking about using it for different purposes. Seventy-five percent of that at least needs to be used for affordable housing, the other twenty-five percent may be used for housing in general. And I think you know that we're talking about potentially using uh that hundred thousand dollars on a project and that's uh reflected in the budget. Um, anything on that category, which is, um, I think we're at the end of that category, Special Revenue Funds? At least that subset. Anything on that subset?
Thank you, yes. Um, I would like to go back to the two oh five fund, that would be page one oh eight. Um, so the last we heard on average, that fund had about one point three million. And this year's budget is taking about fifty percent of that. Are, is there anything in this budget that's bringing revenue into this fund?
Well, I mean, I think we've, we've been told that the uh, to expect no dividend from Marshall Utilities, at least at this moment. Um, you know, o- other revenue that could come back in would be lot sales from Daniel's, uh, which we could potentially see new. In fact, one of them may happen here soon, it may still happen in calendar year twenty-twenty-five. I'm trying to think of other new revenues would be expected in two thirty-five. I mean, in two oh five, I'm sorry.
It is a new revenue, but we do get a contribution from Mackey towards um the Wenzel Family Plaza Coordinator. And there's, that fund does earn its own interest, so those are um the only primary revenue sources that we have.
I, I, I think, I think you mean Visit Marshfield, I'm looking at Denise, but that's fine, that's fine. Not, not a problem.
Okay.
At least you didn't say somebody was gone that's here, that's. You did fine, thank you.
Could we, could we just go over what we're spending on this fund just for this year? Um, you said one of them was a staff position, which that's.
You're, you're talking about the two oh five? Why don't, why don't I just read the entire list? I was jumping around because some, some of them are very nominal in amounts, but um, eight thousand dollars uh is, well, that's, that's revenue, eight thousand dollars is coming into us from the, the Wood County for that Building Revitalization Fund. That complements the twenty-five thousand we're expecting to spend for a thirty-three thousand dollar uh program this year. We're also estimating thirty thousand dollars on the fund balance in interest, on a, on a six hundred thousand dollar fund balance, so. And the utilities dividend at this point, again, we don't have any reason to believe there's gonna be one. For the expenses, the twenty thousand dollars in development, development incentive for the project that I think we've been talking about in, in recent weeks here in closed session. Sixty thousand dollars in potential repurchase of land in Daniel's Edition. Again, that will only happen if somebody doesn't start building within the timeline allotted. Fifty-three thousand in total for the Mackey uh or Marshall Area Community Foundation, if you will, the Development Director Position. Forty-seven of which is uh put toward pay and benefits and six thousand for promotional and marketing fees. And then twenty-eight thousand for Main Field, Main Street Marshfield. Uh, eighteen thousand of that for downtown beautification and ten thousand for downtown marketing. Seventy-five thousand for the West Second Street Project, the bulk of that being for the consulting fee to Van De Wall for our consulting uh assistance. Let me see, have we already covered a couple of those? Let's see, uh, twenty-two hundred and forty-eight dollars, two thousand two hundred and forty-eight for a bike rodeo event uh in twenty-twenty-six and working with the Four H Group. Um, thirty-eight thousand nine twenty, the city's contribution to the Wenzel Family Plaza Programming Position. Then a hundred thousand dollars for the Planner Position, which is the same thing we did last year for that position, is a transfer from two oh five to General Fund. And then a hundred thousand dollar, a, a general, uh, uh, an adjustment of some unallocated money from twenty-twenty uh four. And then Historic Preservation, we did agree ultimately to four thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars uh to fund fifty percent of their request that they made to the county that wasn't funded, but thankfully Visit Marshfield jumped into the water as well to cover half of it to get the five remaining historic district signs put in, in the downtown area. There you go.
Okay, I just wanna clarify, did you say twenty-two thousand for a bike rodeo?
No, two, if I said that, I apologize, two thousand two hundred and forty-eight.
Okay.
Yeah, no, not twenty-two thousand, heaven forbid. That would be an expensive bike rodeo.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, we, wait. Okay. So the two under Urban Development, which is the two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, is that where you've kind of lumped the Mackey, Main Street, um, Second Street, is that all under the, that's under Professional Services? Where is all, like, what's the two hundred and sixty that's Urban Development? Oh, those two, okay. Oh, those two. Okay. Thank you. Gotcha. Okay. So then we have. Oh, and then they're broken up like that. Got it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody else? I don't see anyone else for that one. So we are moving on to, I think, what was next, your debt service fund.
Thank you.
Page one twenty.
Let people get there for a second, including me. But it's basically principal, what we're projecting for twenty twenty six. Principal payments on our debt of three point seven million, interest payments of one point three million. Those are both rounded numbers. But effectively, just slightly under five million overall in payment on existing debt.
Any questions? Okay, next is the capital projects fund, which starts on page one twenty two.
Yeah, and I was talking to Jennifer real briefly before this meeting. I'm not sure how easy these are to really cover. And I mean, if you have questions, I'd like certainly address them. Most of the the TID ones are, you know, really just some of the fees for auditing and some of those kind of things that are annual expenditures as far as what we know to expect. But then we do have several before that, the public facilities, public safety, the capital. I guess I'm not really sure where to go with that in terms of Q and A, but if you see anything that that seems particularly noteworthy, let's, let's for sure talk about it.
All right, so taking a look through that, because he's not going to go through each little part, is there any questions? Anybody? Jen?
I just have one simple question. Under the five, the fifty three, three eleven, it says highway maintenance. Highway street maintenance. It's on page one twenty four, the top one.
Okay. Yep, highway street maintenance.
Okay, how does that differ from the street maintenance on sixty three? Like, whose income is that? Tim, please.
I know she is. Well, oh, I was getting, so go ahead. I was gonna start with take it.
Oh, sorry.
Well, we're fighting for your business.
Apparently. Thanks for making me feel important.
Yeah, yeah.
So a lot of the times what I like to do is I offer a sheet on page one forty seven that kind of accumulates all of the capital funds and and fun things that we have to look at, especially with enterprise wastewater and seven oh one. There's a lot to look at in the capital funds. So in trying my best, the last few years, I've put that together for you on page one forty seven. The particular question that you're asking, Alder Mendelis, is what the crack seal, if that's actually crack seal and fill, on the three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars that's in CIP. So it's also reclamite paving, so like when they put the oil-based service on top of the roads to keep it longer for asphalt, that's part of that.
So do you not expect that to happen again in twenty six? Because in twenty five, it's thirty, or that's three hundred and sixty seven. And then in twenty six on here, it says eighty thousand.
Yeah, so what we ended up doing is the three seventy five is the, basically the crack seal item, the two million-ish we put in cap, in a five seven function. So it's five, seven, three, one, one. We looked at this as fifty seven is more road construction. The crack seal and fill is the five, three, three, one, one. So yes, we do anticipate it and it's in four one. It's just in a different function, a couple of pages down.
Okay, thank you.
Jordan, Jordan, while you're still up there, just to kind of clarify until everybody understands what we're talking about, though. When you look at these capital projects, you know, public safety, public facilities, capital outline, we're charging whatever ties to those projects. In other words, it could be labor. It could be all wrapped up into, so when employees are charging their time, it's going to be, if it's to those projects, it's going to show in that four, four hundred level.
Yeah, correct. So for the, for when Tim's staffer out there recreating a street or ripping up a street and putting a new one down, that's the charge of the labor. It's the charge of the motor pool that uses the the equipment. It's the raw materials that are hauled in. I think there was a question on recycling, whether or not we reuse our asphalt. Tim, you can better talk to that crushing our materials. We do that as well. But yes, the labor and every other expense, as well as the asphalt cost itself with our vendor goes in there.
Jen, do you have any further?
No, thanks, Jordan.
Anybody else? Okay, I don't see anybody. So we are going to go on next to the enterprise funds, which you'll find on page one forty eight.
Okay, we have for both wastewater and EMS, we have markets here from wastewater and we have representatives from fire and EMS if there's any questions, but not anything particularly significantly noteworthy on wastewater. And on EMS, you know, we've talked about the fund many times and how things are going. I think we're doing much better now that we're budgeting properly for bad debts expense. We've come to a much better place than we were, you know, three years ago, for example. And that shows in terms of the revenue and expense expectations in that fund. But we would take any questions that a council might have.
Questions? I don't see anybody. Okay, so next will be the internal services fund on page one fifty eight.
I think that Tim Rasmussen did an excellent job earlier of explaining the whole seven oh one fund. And what I would want to add to it, if you look at that, is, you know, we try to project how much we can afford to replace. We've got, we do a good job now, I think, of tracking our equipment and vehicles. You know, we don't necessarily go for the fact that if it's ten years old and and the useful life is ten years old, we automatically replace it, but we look at the maintenance history of that vehicle or equipment and a lot of other things to decide. But again, we are, I believe, replacing about somewhere around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment or proposing to do that from that fund. And again, the money's come in from the the use of fund of equipment where departments are paying in for for that expense to try and get ready for the replacement of set of items. So again, roughly four hundred and some thousand dollars of equipment to be replaced, and that's our proposal.
Are there any questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the perpetual care fund.
Yeah, very little activity anticipated in that fund. It's not used very often. And again, this fund is intended to care for the needs of the the cemeteries that we have, the three, our own plus the two that we care for on behalf of the Catholic and Lutheran cemeteries. But again, there's no, there's no real significant activity projected in this budget for twenty twenty six.
Okay, are there, okay, Ms. Tompkins, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm wondering, we had a presentation and then we also tonight showed that our savings is a little bit higher than it needs to be. I mean, we love having savings, but it is a little bit higher. I think it's, is it higher by three million, higher than what we know?
It's higher by three percent. That's not three million, yeah.
How much is three percent?
Dollar amount? I don't know. We could, maybe Jennifer's going to quick try and see what what thirty percent of our annual operating expenses would be right now. All she's doing that, I guess I might talk to that a little bit, too. Oh, she's coming up. I'll let her address.
It's roughly about seven hundred thousand over as of the end of twenty twenty four.
Okay. So I, I wonder if one of the things that we should talk about as a council and potentially put it into the budget as a place saver is would some of that money be well spent for the salary of a community development director? Because we've all talked about economic development and we all said the very first thing we should do is put that person in place. And if we have yet another budget cycle where we don't budget for that person, we are going to have the same conversation next year. So I, to me, that would be a good use of having a little bit of surplus is to pay for the benefits and wages for that person. And potentially thinking, you know, let's think ahead to three years and at least think about funding that position for three years and see how much that's helping our community, whether it's something that's important, whether that position needs to be continued. Anyhow, that's a thought, but I feel like if we don't put a place saver in our budget for that, using some of that surplus, we're never going to hire this person.
Well, let me, it's, it's an interesting point. Let me tell you the general rule of thumb that you'll hear when people talk about this subject. You know, a lot of cities do come in with the area of twenty five to thirty percent. That's where you want to be. You want to have twenty five to thirty percent of your operating expenses in reserves. And that's, you know, three months or a little bit more. If you get to the point where you are at forty percent or more, your citizens probably should be asking why you're taxing them at the level you are. You know, because it's like, you know, are, you know, you've got a pretty high fund balance and you use it for some services and programs. I don't know if thirty two or thirty three percent rises to that level or not. I guess you can decide for yourself. But it is nice to be above the range that the auditor would recommend, and it does give us potential if we wish to use it. I'll leave it at that. It's not far above, but it's, you know, in terms of dollar amount, it seems fairly far above. In terms of percentages, above. It's nice to be there for the first time in a while.
Do you have any follow up for that, Natasha?
I don't know. I would, I mean, I would like to hear from the council if they had, but I think I have to have a motion to do that. Do I have to have a motion to? No, we could just have a discussion. I would just like to hear from other people if that position is important enough to use surplus for.
You can certainly have that discussion.
All right, does anybody want to weigh in on Mrs. Tompkins' topic that she would like to discuss? Go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you. I tend to agree. I mean, I appreciate both points, but to Ms. Tompkins' point, I mean, I think in we run the risk of having the same conversation again next year, and we've proven that we're really good at having the same conversations year over year. And unless we do something to really prompt us to hire this position, I I tend to agree, I think we're going to find ourselves in the same position and we need to really do something to fill that spot because that's pretty much a cornerstone, that unless we get that position filled, we're really treading water here. So I really think we need to find some way to fund it or fill that position next year. And if we aren't tapping the money, and I'm not wild about it, so I agree with Mr. Barg, but I don't know how else we're, we're going to fill that position or force ourselves to fill the position unless we're really budgeting for it and saying, hey, look, we have to hire this and go forward with it. So I appreciate both sides, but I don't have faith in ourselves of actually filling the position next year unless we do something like this.
Mr. Werman?
Thank you. I agree. I don't know if this is the right fund to take it from, but I would absolutely agree that we have had this conversation multiple times. If we don't do something, we will likely brush this under the rug again so that we can move forward. The other thing I would explore potentially is, I think, when I joined council in twenty twenty three, I think the utilities had a pretty large amount of savings as well that they had built up. And I know Nick and I had discussed what they needed operationally for contingency, and so that may be worth exploring as well. I don't know how their budget sits, but it would definitely benefit the utilities as well if we get somebody in here for community development and bring in more people and more businesses. So I think it would be worth exploring with them as well.
Jen, go ahead.
I'm going to keep it short and sweet and say I agree with them. That it's important, well, I'm not going to, but it's important, I think, that we do it or we're never going to do it.
I think the one thing I would want to look at if this is where council wants to take it and talking with finance staff is how this would play out in terms of, you know, the the overall levy limit and expenditure restraint. I'm not saying, I'm not saying it would cause us a problem. I'm not saying that at all, but we'd want to look between meetings at how that would play out, if in fact that's the direction we go.
Anybody else? So my suggestion on that is, being this is the first real adjustment that somebody's making to the budget, that maybe we possibly hold off on motions until we can hear other people's suggestions, because we may have to, you know, kind of go off of of one topic to the other. So if we can get roughly the cost of what that would be with wages and benefits, obviously, we wouldn't be looking to hire anyone in January. Well, maybe, because this is October, but I doubt it, you know, the recruiting and all that, how long it takes. But if we can kind of just get that brought back to us through email before the next meeting, so people have time to digest that. And then also, I would suggest when you do that, to let us know where that would come from. I mean, she suggested fund balance, but if there's other ideas, maybe that we bring that forward. And then in addition, I think it is worth a conversation with the utility to see if they would be willing to split that position.
Wonderful. I think that's a great approach.
Okay. All right, onward. I think the next section is just a request for more information, suggestions, anything that you're thinking about right now, I think is a good idea, even if you think it's like a sort of a crazy idea. Let's put it out there so that Steve and Jennifer, Jordan can hear the ideas and we can get more information prior to the next meeting and not be surprising anybody. I have put out a couple of emails I know Steve is aware of and Justin is aware of, and I'll be looking for that information to be shared with the entire council prior to the next budget meeting, if we can get that together. But let's go ahead. Mike, do you have anything? We're moving right down the line. Microphone?
I would like some information for Jody on, or from Jody, on the ordinance position. And then your plan, how we're going to fund that. If you don't mind, please. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Mr. Karan?
Not offhand.
Varsho? Mr. Varsho?
The pilot payment for the utilities, that's just estimated, or is it pretty close to one?
What we've done right now is, yeah, what we've done right now is estimated it last year. We're hopeful it may go higher based upon just some things that are hard to describe. We don't know that for a fact, though, so we had to estimate that.
Eventually.
As we go through this process in the next couple of meetings, we'll be able to get maybe some final determination on revenues, and that's one of them that we hope to nail down this month.
Thank you.
Mrs. Tompkins?
None at this time. Thanks.
Mr. Werman?
Thank you. I, the one thing I had mentioned at a previous meeting, and it may be tough to pull together, but I think it would be beneficial for everyone on the council as we go through these line items is what is our minimum operational expenses here? Because as we get into some of these, you know, we start looking at things like travel, travel department or travel publications, telecommunications, like there's a bunch of line items that probably in theory make a lot of sense. But if you're looking at it, you know, and you're just not super familiar with it or the public's trying to read through it, it doesn't mean anything. So we need to know if that is like an operational expense that they maintain or if that's for seminars and things like that. So I just think knowing what the bare minimum is, that baseline for these departments would be super helpful.
Another required versus not required, basically.
And Mr. Raigle?
None at this moment.
In addition, though, to, I think, maybe you and and council member Werman both mentioned the list of cuts. I know you mentioned it at one point. I'm more specific of what we've done so far.
Correct, yeah, outside of that, yeah, no.
I've got that one down already.
And if we can get that just hooked to each department, please.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so let's see, where are we at? Anything else that anybody else has thought of? Mayor, do you have anything?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so we've come to H on the agenda, which is to announce the dates and times of the upcoming budget meetings. The next meeting will be held on Tuesday, October fourteenth at five P M, followed by a meeting on Monday, October twentieth at six P M. And then Monday, October twenty seventh at six P M, if needed. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Have a motion and a second, Dellis and Karan. All those in favor, roll count. Mrs. Spiros? Yes. Mr. Raigle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Reilly?
Aye.
Is that everyone? We're adjourned.